I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 1st briefing for the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. This is in preparation for, this is a briefing for the Thursday, December the 4th, regular meeting. Normally, we've got, we have three discussion items today, and I really would like to jump and do those first, but Commissioner Linville said he needs to get back to his farm on a thing today, and our meeting part is pretty short, so I think we can go right through, turn it over to our county manager to cover the items, and then we'll take each of the three discussion items separately.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioner, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you are for consideration for the December 4th meeting. Agenda items one through four are organizational business matters that will be voted on on Thursday. We will have election of chair, vice chair, the meeting schedule, and then our standard renewing bonds for various Forsyth County officials.
And I would just say, as there any desire, we had talked about adjusting some requirements on meeting, about speaking limits on, we discussed that back earlier than three minutes to two minutes. That would be an organizational issue that could be discussed and dealt with, or at least be discussed anyway, next, on Thursday, and action, I guess, could take place afterwards.
So at your seats, it's going to be the last page of your packet that's in front of you. We do have a revised rules of procedure for your consideration. Happy to ask our county attorney if he wants to walk through it, if you want to talk about it today, or if you want to move it to the next cycle, it's really at the pleasure of the board. But it is an organizational matter.
I would think if we looked at it, and then we could actually, if there's discussion parts, we could actually talk about it on Thursday.
That's right.
Talk about it on Thursday, and then go from there, okay?
Thank you, and we'll, I'll email you the track changed version as well, so you can easily see the changes.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just state that I'm going to be at a NACO Board of Directors meeting on Thursday, so I won't be here. My deputy county attorney, Fred Johnson, will be here. But I think what is set forth is pretty self-explanatory for most parts. Most of the changes are just changing to reflect the Monday, Thursday schedule that we now have.
Okay, I'll look at it, and we can recover that. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is a resolution opposing federal and state legislation allowing for increased truck weight and length on interstate highways, state routes, and local roads. This was something you discussed at one of the past briefings that we said we would bring forth back on the agenda, if there's any questions. Agenda item number six is a resolution committing to housing availability, housing choice, and elimination of barriers to housing by the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Kyle Haney, our deputy county manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So back in September, at the board's bi-monthly meeting, staff proposed a joint resolution that city staff and county staff had been discussing to support housing availability, housing choice, and elimination of barriers to housing in the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. And really, the impetus for this was a request by the Triad Real Estate and Business Industry Coalition to commit to housing availability within Forsyth County. There was a study that was commissioned by the North Carolina Realtors Association in 2024 around the Carolina Core, looking at all of the economic development growth they're expecting in the next couple of years here with Boom, Supersonic, and all of those projects, and projected that 25,350 housing units were needed by the year 2030. And so the city and county staff got together and identified all the areas where we are already supporting housing development, and you can see some of those listed here in this resolution. So the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County have both adopted 11 separate text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinances aimed at removing barriers to various types of housing, such as revising plat requirements, amending buffer yard standards, permitting multifamily housing in additional non-residential districts, and reducing minimum lot sizes for single-family housing and multifamily zoning. That was also a priority and commitment through the Forward 2045 Comprehensive Plan that the city and county adopted, and something that was in the board's strategic goals that we adopted last year as well, was supporting housing availability. And so what this resolution really is, is a joint statement from the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County to say that we will continue to review our planning and zoning policies in a way that supports that growth to meet the residential needs of these economic development projects in the future, that the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County are committed to analyzing UDO provisions related to housing choice, missing middle housing, broader use and support of accessory dwelling units, and increased density in appropriate locations, such as in activity centers and growth corridors in anticipation of preparing text amendments to address any issue, identified issues, and to set a goal of committing to improving and permitting an additional 25,000 housing units through the year 2045, which is actually based on our natural pace, is what we would be able to do. And so the city is looking at the same resolution, and will be voting on it today, tonight, at their meeting, did pass unanimously in their committee. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kyle?
Agenda item number seven is approval of minutes for the meeting of November 20th, and those have been emailed to you. Agenda item number eight is a resolution authorizing quantum Meriwit payment to EMSL Analytical, Inc., and a resolution authorizing the payment to Stryker Sales. Joshua Swift from Public Health Department and Stephen Yance from the Sheriff's Office will brief this item.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. The first item, item A, is public health. We have utilized EMSL Analytical for many years to complete third-party testing of our samples for lead and other metal contamination. Before July 1, 2024, the department had on each work order separately without preparing a contract. Recently, the vendor notified Public Health of two outstanding invoices from 2023, totaling $250.80. Public Health has determined the invoice services were rendered, but the department did not pay for such services at that time. So we have now have, it's been addressed. We've entered into an annual contract with EMSL for fiscal years '24, '25, and '25, '26. So just asking for your help in covering that expense from 2023. Any questions?
Questions for Joshua.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Very similar situation with the Duke AED project. We did have some of our AEDs that fell from the drones twice in May and June when they were in the testing phase. We did get those AEDs serviced. The invoices came in a little bit late, but the services were rendered. So just ask permission to be able to pay those invoices.
Questions for Stephen.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine is an amendment to the fiscal year '26 budget ordinance to appropriate $157,147 of surplus proceeds to the motor vehicle and mobile equipment subfund. Kimberly Bussey from our budget office will brief this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is actually a correction to this item. It should be appropriating $107,956 to the motor vehicle subfund. Just want to make sure everyone has that in front of them. This is from two sales. Originally, we had three sales, one that was in March, one that occurred in July, and one that occurred in October. We're only appropriating now the two sales in fiscal year '26, one in July and one in October. So this is, again, this item is necessary for surplus of vehicle revenue to appropriate in fiscal year '26 budget in the amount of $107,956. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Any questions for Kimberly? It just, it appeared they're just being prored to the, to the individual departments that the sales took place.
That's right, and so the, we have a list of the individual vehicles that were sold, and so if they were for the Sheriff's Office or vehicles for emergency services, we put those back to those specific departments when we appropriate the revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is a resolution approving purchase of turnout gear from MES Life Safety LLC by Forsyth County Emergency Medical Services. Division of Forsyth County Emergency Services, Andrew Davis, our EMS chief, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today because Forsyth County EMS needs to replace our current turnout gear. It's past its 10-year shelf window. This is replacement sets for our current employees and also new sets for the new employees that we'll be, you know, hiring over the next several months. This is through MES through a SourceWorld contract. That's for 125 sets of turnout gears for a total of $369,491.74. We recommend that we enter into a purchase agreement with MES for the total amount. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Question. Can you tell me about how far past their slated replacement date the current turnout gear is?
The majority of our turnout gear outside of 58 sets that were purchased through ARPA money were manufactured in 2008 or 2009, so those sets of turnout gear were set to expire in 2018, 2019.
Thanks. Do we, will we put in a system at this point that would guarantee that we don't run so far over the projected best lifespan of the turnout gear?
I'll take that one for you. That is not due to EMS requesting it. It had not been approved by the manager's office, and now we are putting it in the capital plan as something that is a requirement.
Thank you. The reason I raise that question is that I recall one of the first serious public safety questions that I was part of addressing on the city council years ago dealt with outdated turnout gear for firefighters, and said, you know, that was, that was bad.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I certainly don't want our EMS personnel to be experiencing the same kind of issue here.
Yes, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Drew.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a purchase order to Nashville Automotive LLC doing business as Sarah Chevrolet Buick GMC for the purchase of three new 2026 Chevrolet 2500 Crew Cab trucks. Jonathan Markle, our Automotive Services Manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before you today is three vehicles to be purchased, two for fire services, one for the Sheriff's Department. Those will be upfitted after arrival. We did bid this out with city-county purchasing, and Sarah Chevrolet out of Nashville was the lowest price. We also reviewed state contract and Sheriff's Association for available pricing. None of them can meet the requirements for the vehicle or the delivery timeframe that Sarah was able to promise. Any questions?
Were these the only two bids that were submitted?
They were the only two bids that we received, yes, sir.
That's unusual, you have to go that far to...
Absolutely, and the participating dealers on the state contract also received the bid, and we reached out to them after the bid closed, when they did not bid, to verify their availability.
Well, there's some, there's big dealers of all kinds here in North Carolina, about as big as they are in other places, aren't they?
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract to MWM Construction, Inc. for the Piedmont Propulsion Structural Infill Project. James Anderson from our General Services Department will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is a resolution awarding a contract to MWM Construction for the Piedmont Propulsion Structural Infill Project. The project was formally advertised by city-county purchasing on October 17, 2025, with seven bids received on November 12, 2025. There were two bid alternates that we are also recommending for acceptance. Alternate one is the installation of epoxy floor system in the area where the structural infill is being completed. And then the second alternate is to infill the lower level to provide a flat and smooth surface that can be suitable for use. Currently, there is a bunch of curbs that were there to contain any spills from the former plating operations that were done in that facility. Including the bid alternates, MWM submitted a bid of $1,107,86. The other bids received were from Cinderella Partners, Central Builders Incorporated, Bar Construction Company, HM Current Corporation, Davi Construction, and Heartland Contracting. Bids range from 1.1 million to roughly 1.5 million. MWM submitted with their bid a commitment to 1.1% MWE participation. Unfortunately, this fell short of the 10% goal, and a MWE good faith effort review was completed by city-county purchasing and county staff, and was determined that MWM did make a good faith effort to obtain the 10% participation. And the resolution also authorizes the county manager to sign change orders in an amount not to exceed $150,000. This amount is a little bit higher percentage-wise than what we typically will carry on a project, but due to the nature of the facility, having had plating operations in the past, there's some concern that we may hit some hazardous materials issues, and then also there may be some underlying structural concerns that we don't know about until we start moving the steel. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Did we do something at this building a few years ago?
We've done a couple of projects there. Most recently was the replacement of the chiller. Most recently was the replacement of the chiller. Mark Davidson's in the back. I think he can probably talk some more about some of the other work that's been done there.
Well, are we redoing something alternate or...
So when that facility was originally used, the back portion of it had an area that's basically just an open pit that held plating vats. And so it sits down about three feet, four feet or so below the finished floor elevation. So what we're doing with this project is going in raising that steel up so that it makes a flat level surface on that level that they can use for additional manufacturing space. The tenant there, Piedmont Propulsion, they've obtained a considerable increase in their governmental contracts, and they are trumping at the bits to get this additional space.
Okay, thank you. I was pleasantly surprised with seven bidders, and three of them are really close. So the specs for the project must have been pretty good. And I assume that there's, there was nothing hidden in the specs that, that dealt with some undiscoverables that had to be, that were going to be in the base bid, because otherwise I'm having a hard time understanding why the, I mean, you got a cluster together there, and the 1.1 millions was three bidders, and then it's in the two and the 1.3s, a 1.4 and a 1.5. I just, you understand what the question I'm asking? Is there something that they were to cover that could be undiscoverable that they would be responsible for?
Without having conversations with them to see what the difference was, I'm not able to hazard a guess as to...
But I mean, you're familiar with the specs.
Yes, sir.
And from your mind, the specs were clear enough that there's no way that that could have been...
They were, yes, sir.
Well, three people had it pretty clear.
They did, yeah.
I think so. Anyway, other questions for James?
Yes, thank you. I do have a question as it relates to the 1.1% MWBE participation that they committed to. What was that commitment?
I'll have to go back and pull their bid to get that for you.
Okay, yeah, I would like to know that. And I would also like to know the evidences for the good faith effort.
Okay. All right, we can, we can share that with you.
Other questions for James?
Thank you.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the grant and execution of a utility easement to Duke Energy Carolina's LLC to construct and access utility infrastructure across a portion of Forsyth County-owned real property located at 201 North Chestnut Street. Chelsea Swaim, our Deputy General Services Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. This is an easement request from Duke Energy's Carolina's LLC for installation and maintenance of utility infrastructure to include the transformer that will be here at this facility and will feed into the electric vehicle charging stations that we have on the fifth floor of the parking deck here. The transformer and everything will be on the backside of the building, and this easement does include our standard language where we would have to provide written approval if they wanted to relocate the infrastructure. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Kelsey, I mean, excuse me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Agenda item number 14 is a second reading on an ordinance awarding franchises for residential and small business solid waste collection, transportation, and disposal services, and adding optional recycling services in unincorporated areas of Forsyth County. We did brief this item previously. I think there was a request for certificates of insurance, which I did email to you this morning. I don't know if there's any other questions you had about this item.
Any other questions?
Agenda item number 15 is a resolution extending, extending the year 2026 tax listing period. Amanda Markle, our Tax Assessor Collector, will brief this item.
Should have made that item just a little bit longer, so I had more time to walk up, shouldn't I have? Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item for you today is a request to extend the listing period. By statute, the listing period is the month of January every year, but in a non-reappraisal year, it can be extended up to 30 days past that. So we are requesting an extension to allow our taxpayers until February the 16th to file their listing forms with our office. I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Amanda? Pure curiosity, why February 16?
We went two weeks from the initial due date. Since January 31st is on a Saturday, they would have until February the 2nd, so we did, it did an additional two weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 16 is the September Human Resources Report. That's all of our agenda items before we get to our discussion. And our first discussion item is a Forsyth Tech update by Dr. Janet Spriggs.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to share a report with you today. I'm going to try to make our technology work, and I think easier than ever. I have got a lot of exciting news to share with you because it is the end of 2025, which means it's the end of our Vision 2025 strategic plan, and it's been a banner year for your community college. To start with, I want to share the latest great news that we have, and that is that the Aspen Institute's College Excellence Program did name Forsyth Tech as one of the top 200 colleges in the country eligible for the 2027 Aspen Prize. We're very excited about this honor, but we're more excited about what it means because to be able to be named one of the top 200, you have to have shown that not only are you committed to student success, but that you are seeing outcomes that are delivering greater levels of student success and access and labor market outcomes for your community. So what that means is this is the first time our college has been eligible, and what it means is that based on data alone, they have used publicly available data to find the top 200. We are seeing greater levels of student success than most of the community colleges across the country. We are now in a process of completing the application, which is very intense. We have sent them a lot more data already, and we're working on a narrative, and we'll know in April if we are one of the 25 that will go on to compete for the prize. So keep your fingers crossed. We're doing our best job to tell the story, and we think it's a pretty good story to tell, and we'll keep you posted on that.
I interrupted. About how many community colleges are there in the country?
There's around 11, almost 1,200 community colleges, public community colleges. There's a number of other two-year and private schools. But yeah, it's quite an honor.
Yeah, I should say.
Yes. And again, when you look at it in the terms of students and individuals and what we're doing for the community, that's what we're really excited about.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Another exciting development for the year has been our partnership with Reynolds American as our founding partner. Any of you who were with us at our gala in October, you heard this news, the Future Ready Workforce Alliance. Rather than me tell you about it, I have a quick video that will give you a little bit of information about what this means. I am thrilled about the creation of the Future Ready Workforce Alliance right here at Forsyth Technical Community College. I'm excited because this initiative will build a world-class talent pool in Forsyth and Stokes Counties and beyond. The Future Ready Workforce Alliance is a collaboration of education, business, and community partners who are committed to solving one of our most pressing challenges, the need for skilled workers. It will unlock potential and help folks change the trajectory of their lives. At the same time, it will help businesses grow with a reliable, work-ready talent pipeline.
Over the past century and a half, we've learned a lot, and one lesson really stands out. And that lesson is that lasting legacies are built by investing in people and forging strong partnerships.
All of this will happen because the education is targeted, fast, and aligned with the needs of our region's most in-demand industries. This includes health sciences, transportation, logistics, advanced manufacturing, and technology. The Future Ready Workforce Alliance will not only help attract and cultivate employees, it will also help employees grow in their career. Here's one potential path. A student employee takes coursework at the beginning of their employment and then continues studies while working on the job site. Another possible path includes the company seeing long-term potential in an employee and paving the way for them to broaden and strengthen their education for growth in their career. In each situation, the program is customizable to the employer's needs and truly becomes a partnership with the employer and Forsyth Tech.
Programs like the Future Ready Workforce Alliance are going to help all of these companies find a new way to hire, train, educate, and grow their workforce, their talent, and of course, their company and the community at the same time. 61% of our available labor force are working in Forsyth County. Access to top talent is the number-one thing we hear from our existing employers and employers looking to move here. That's what this program is going to be doing and helping shape the future of the companies and the economy here in Winston-Salem.
I am proud to announce that Reynolds is the founding partner of the Forsyth Tech Future Ready Workforce Alliance, an initiative grounded in a very simple but powerful belief that when we invest in people, we build stronger businesses, stronger communities, and a stronger future.
We are so grateful to our founding partner, the Reynolds American Organization, for helping us launch this initiative and for their long history of educational philanthropy. We invite you to join us in the Future Ready Workforce Alliance, where we are building careers and opportunity.
This is an effort that we can accomplish together as partners, and I'm confident that we can become a national model of how business and academia can come together and create the gold standard.
Together, we can create opportunities, develop talent, and shape a stronger future for our entire community. So we're very excited to kick this off in 2026. Reynolds American, we couldn't think of a better partner to be the founding partner with us, but we also are going to challenge and invite and welcome all members of all industry sectors across our service area to be a part of this initiative as well. The primary thing that I hope you will all recognize is that it is a workforce development opportunity, and it's a different way of thinking about higher education for workforce development and how it meets the specific needs of the industries in the service area. So it's basically co-designing how the curriculum will work for workforce development within our region. These are just some other pictures from our Sapphire Gala for you. And I wanted to just share with you, as you all might remember, seven years ago now, I'm finishing my seventh year as your community college president, and when I came, one of the first meetings that we had together, I started talking about our strategic plan because it was time to build a new strategic plan for the college. We built Vision 2025, and across these seven years, I've shared updates along the way with you. One of the reasons that we are a top 200 Aspen college is because we really took that strategic plan and invested our energy, our tactical, our money, our finances, everything around. How do we make those strategies come to life? Because we knew that we understood the things that could make greater levels of student success, help more students be successful. But we had to put it all together through a strategy that allowed us to tie day-to-day operations to what our strategic direction was. I'm proud to share with you that we've had phenomenal success. This is a slide from the community college system for North Carolina. Enrollment is one measurement of success, making sure that you've got the students that you can support and help them build their dreams. We've increased 16% since 1920 in overall enrollment. Some of our enrollment programs are seeing record levels, although 16% is substantially higher than the 8% average for the state. So we're happy about that. I also want to share that every year, in addition to having the strategic plan goals and outcomes, we have what we call Trailblazer Annual Priorities. We have four annual priorities each year that we really focus in on. These were the four for 2025. Completion and transfer, we wanted to increase the number of first-time freshmen that passed college-level math and college-level English because that is a huge indicator of overall success. We had a goal of going from 25% to 30%, and we hit 33%, so we exceeded that goal. For our equitable access and success, we wanted to make sure that all students, so our URM student attainment was also increasing to that same level, and that hit 34% this year. So we're really excited that everyone is doing better at Forsyth Tech. For our learning outcomes strategy, we wanted to increase successful completion of gateway courses. These are the courses that all students have to take for their degree, the general education types of courses, English and math, and those important base-level general education. We want it to be at 75%, and I'm happy to say we went from 69% to 75%. And then finally, labor market outcomes, this, we are continuing this work, but we did exceed this tap. We wanted to expand our one-college model, and by that, what we have done over the past five years is to say that students don't come to us to be continuing education or curriculum or basic skills. They come to us because they want a better future, they want a better job, they want a better life. And so we have really adopted, we're going to meet students where they are, help them get on the right pathway, and make sure that our pathways translate from short-term eight-week certificates all the way through associate degrees and beyond to the bachelor's degree. And we have successfully exceeded the benchmark of developing five new programs. We implemented seven innovative programs that seamlessly integrate continuing education, fast-track options, and associate degree programs that are aligned specifically with livable wage outcomes. So another important part of that is making sure that we don't graduate anyone into poverty, that when they get a degree from Forsyth Tech, it sets them up with a livable wage income. Just a few headline wins for Vision 2025 overall, and I'm going to leave a report with you that shows you all of the strategies, all of the goals, and all of the outcomes. But a few of our biggest headline wins. Our completion rate, as you know, I shared with you in October, we had a goal of 40%, and we're at 43%. Our URM goal was 38, we're at almost 42, 41.6%. Credentials per 100 FTE is an important metric of success because it basically is showing that students are not just continuing to progress in a program, they're actually earning credentials. We had a goal of 45, and we are at 45.65. And then gateway course success, which I just mentioned to you, is at 75%. That was something we particularly worked on this past year. We had four pillars, completion, learning, equitable access, and success in our Vision 2025. And I will not go through each of these because I'm going to give you the full report, but I just want you to see that we did, our team, the faculty and staff at Forsyth Tech, really leaned into making sure that we were focusing on what those goals were and achieving and/or exceeding the majority of them. There are some that are still needing impact, as you see here, our bachelor's completion, and that is a measurement of how many of our transfer students earn a degree within three years of completing their credential with us. We need to raise that. It's only at 56%. Our goal is 70. We'll keep working on that. You'll see here, we've made significant progress in these early momentum key indicators, key performance indicators. We are seeing that, again, everyone is doing better at Forsyth Tech, so our low-income students, our underrepresented students are all doing better today. And with learning outcomes, we are seeing higher levels of success in our gateway courses, in our transfer GPAs. We're very proud of this one. Students who stay with us for two years and go to the four-year universities do better at the university than the students who start at the university. And then our post-graduation outcome, we basically exceeded almost all of our metrics there. That is making sure that we are relevant to the business and industry needs in our community. And again, some more of that data, but I'm going to give you a full report of that. These are just a few of the big wins that we've had with our Vision 2025. Completion, of course, being amazing and exciting. We have a new goal that I'll share in just a moment. We won the Bellwether Award this year. We have a brand-new brand over the past five years, and it's interesting because people from across the state say that they're not sure what the mascot and the, the name of the teams for other community colleges are, but they know that we're the Forsyth Tech Trailblazers. And we're doing really, especially now that we have athletics. And might I just put in a quick plug, that our basketball team is undefeated, 9-0 right out of the gate. So we're very excited about that as well. Now we are moving to the next phase of what we're going to do, Vision 2030. Our board approved our strategic plan in October at their board planning session. We are calling it for Vision 2030 because we had such good success with Vision 2025. And this time, we're looking at Forsyth Tech 3.0, which is future-ready by design, making sure that we are ahead of what the future needs. At your last meeting, I shared with you Dream, Learn, Thrive as our new North Star. And I also shared this with you, that we have the North Star being our highest purpose, why we are here, the vision, the state that we're aiming to achieve by 2030, the mission, what we do every day, our values are the threads that run through every decision, and then our strategic goals and outcomes. And I'm going to share with you today those strategic... And I'm going to share with you today those strategic goals and outcomes that we will be working on for the next five years. There are three strategies. One is to prepare students for college careers and life. This is all about things like the Future Ready Workforce Alliance, how we are co-designing curriculum with our business and industry partners. It's about using data and technology infrastructure to maximize the learning experience and creating greater experiential learning opportunities for our students. Strategy two is Forsyth Tech meets students where they are and removes barriers to success. And this is all about helping students find the financial and basic needs resources they need. It's helping advise and help them with career exploration to get them on the right pathway, and it's about flexible learning. Our students being able to be in class, or if they've got a sick child that day, staying home and being able to watch virtually live or using the LMS, the Learning Management System, asynchronously to continue their learning. Number three is Forsyth Tech empowers people and community to drive regional economic opportunity, and this is all about community. It's about the most important part of our name, which is the community in Forsyth Tech Community College. Community, we want to be community connectors, convening partners across our communities to solve problems, to make sure that we are delivering what you need us to deliver, finding solutions for that, and empowering the workforce in our communities. Our goals are very simple. By 2030, we want annual credentials to be at 8,000 earned by our students, and we want our completion to go from 43% to 60%, and we believe we can do that. We want for outcome number two, our fall-to-spring persistence to reach 85% and fall-to-fall retention to be at 65%. We want number three for graduates and employees, making sure that not only do our graduates earn a livable wage, but all of our employees are also at a livable wage, which has been determined to be $43,000 for our communities. We want 85% of our students to participate in a work-based learning experience because we know that that helps them retain the skills and prepares them for the workforce. We also want to increase the number of active regional employer partners that help us meet those goals. We also know that our students oftentimes stay with those employers and are employed as soon as they graduate. And finally, number five, is we want to make sure that we work on that transfer outcome so that 75% of our transfer students earn a bachelor's degree within four years of leaving Forsyth Tech. So it's very ambitious, but we did so well with Vision 2025, we have no doubt. I told someone the other day, you thought we did good with Vision 2025, wait till you see what we do by 2030. We're excited, we appreciate so much your support throughout this Vision 2025 work, and I'm going to share these reports with you before I go, but I'd love to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I'd certainly say great report, and I kind of remember your discussion of the 2025 goals, and I really thought the 43% graduation thing was going to be way big, 40% was going to be a huge stretch, and to achieve 43 is really outstanding, and all the partnerships and all the focus that you provided have been certainly appreciated by us, and we certainly have appreciated being along the way, seeing the benchmarks as you have achieved them. And I'd have to say, right now, 60% sounds like really a way big stretch, but...
It's a stretch.
Kind of made a believer out of me, anyway, so...
There you go. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Any other comments?
I just remember when you came in 2018, I was on the city council then as the Southwest Ward, so my excuse for coming to listen was that you're in the Southwest Ward, but I was impressed at the time, and I'm impressed with the results now.
Thank you so much. Literally, we have the best team. Our staff and faculty are amazing, and they get all the credit for this work. They've done a great job. I'm going to share these reports with you, if that's okay?
Thanks.
All of the great data.
Thank you.
All the goals that are there, not just the ones I wanted to highlight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, our second discussion is going to be Affordable North Carolina Housing Organization, the Anchor Program, as promised from two weeks ago, so everyone wants to go first? The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to refer to Lori Ingram, who is Executive Director for Anchor Development. She's got several team members here, but they've got a presentation that she'll go over.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know how to get out of this. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us back, I appreciate it. I'm going to go over the proposals that we talked about briefly in the meeting last week and answer any questions that you have. I know some questions came up in the meeting, so this will give us the opportunity to address some of those, so feel free to interrupt and ask questions as you have them. So there were three proposals in front of you. There's the original first adaptive reuse proposal for the old county courthouse, there was the addendum to that proposal, which included the demolition and transfer of the vacant lot, which we're calling Addendum to Proposal 1, and then Proposal 2, which was the sale of the building, and then the transfer of funds to support the three affordable housing-related measures in the community. So, option one, this is the adaptive reuse proposal. So this involves the development scope of essentially transferring the building as it exists, standing on the lot, to Anchor, allowing us to develop it into affordable housing as it exists today. This would include four to five floors of residential. In the proposal, if you've read it, we estimate an efficiency factor of about 70% to 75% being able to turn into residential units, resulting in about 98,000 to 105,000 square feet of residential space. This would include about 50% studio units, 40% one-bedroom units, and 10% two-bedroom units, is what I use to estimate the use of space in this building, which is about 165 to 200 units total in the space, with a first-floor small-market grocery store, 15,000 to 20,000 square feet, which would give us the downtown grocery space that we This would include also space for supportive residential services. For our low-income folks, we know that supportive services are incredibly important for housing stabilization and housing retention needs. This is something that Anchor does at all of our sites. For our tenant populations, we have case managers and support coordinators available for our resident population, so this is one of our core services that we include for all of our tenant populations. The ground-floor mixed podium would include a neighborhood fresh market, other ground-floor commercial space if there's room available, and then the lobby, security, and resident access as well. We would use historic and Lytech's tax credits, and then, of course, the cons of this are that adaptive reuse for spaces like this are that it's very, very expensive. The buildings are not made, and you've all seen it, the buildings are not made to be reused in this way. The floor plates are very thick, the windows are very small. It would take a lot of money to go in and turn it into apartments. It has been done, it's been done across the country, but the cost of doing adaptive reuse in these buildings is almost double what it is to do adaptive reuse in similar non-court-type buildings. It also takes a very long time.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, of course.
So it sounds like you've been in the building...
We have not. This is all based on plans that we were sent and just...
Oh, so you haven't seen the building?
Correct. And just expertise of similar projects from across the country. So we would be looking at nearly $50 million in redevelopment costs and about a $20 million gap. To be clear, based on conversations from the meeting, we aren't asking at this point for that gap financing to come from the county. We wouldn't turn away money from the county, but at this point, we aren't asking for gap financing from the county. We would only be asking for the building to come from the county. Gap financing, we would be proposing, would come from the same way we fill development project funding from any other, any other of our development projects from other sources.
So while we're here, if you don't mind, you're probably going to get into it. So what I understood is that you're asking for us to demolish the building for $1 point or $2 million?
That's what this one's going to get to. Yep. So, yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that when I made a comment about $31 million last time, and Reverend Ford was vigorously shaking his head, I went back and reread it, and I would like to acknowledge that I misinterpreted the way it was used. As the additional funding that would be needed, the commitment that you asked for in this option is for, as you said, the building, of course, but also for the county and city to assist in identifying additional sources.
Yes.
Yeah, that, and while that's sort of broader and less specific commitment, it's still pretty serious. I still like the sell the building and use the option best.
Yes, I, yes, that's pretty, I mean, it's always nice to assist us in identifying, although we acknowledge that we are the affordable housing experts, we're pretty good at identifying where we can get funds to develop and fill gap financing when we need it. So, you know, we have, I think I sent our resume with us, so we have lots of projects that we fill gap financing every day. We have a tax credit property in Greensboro that we were just awarded that we're filling our own gaps this year. So, okay, on to the next.
Could you talk a little bit more about Anchor itself? Because you referenced other projects, and I guess I want to sort of put it in buckets. It seems like part of what you do is managing affordable housing...
Yes.
...you know, projects, and we did provide some support on the Peters Creek project, and of course, it had nothing, they've hired somebody to manage, but it's kind of a separate, specialty kind of company. So you do that, but what about the development itself? Do you all do the developer part and all the locating? Sounds like you're, well, that's a little bit on the reuse, but what about the other parts?
Yes.
Are you more of a management company once affordable housing projects are in place? Or are you more of a actual developer to get them ready?
We're both.
The whole project?
Yes, we're both. So we, Anchor...
Be more one than the other?
So in recent years, we've been doing more property management. Prior to 2018, we were doing more property development. We haven't since 2018 done any new developments, but we now, since we've been back with the new tax credit deal, we're getting back into doing more development. Our development, our previous development director retired, and then we just hadn't done any development since then, but we have a new development team with Tanya Skilman, and we're ramping back up our development. So we have active development happening in Greensboro, we're redeveloping our own existing properties, we have 40 properties that we're redeveloping throughout Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, and the state of North Carolina that we're in active redevelopment of. And then we have properties of our own and other owners that we manage as well.
Last question. You talked about 40 projects. How would they range in size? I mean, for example, what might be the smallest project, and what might be the largest project, and what's sort of the average-sized project, roughly?
Let's see, so our smallest project is six units, and our largest is 244? 144? 144? So, yeah...
And the average being of the 40?
I'd say 70? Yeah, 70. Yeah, so around there. Spread throughout the state, so senior, we serve seniors, we serve veterans, we serve families, so we do a little bit of everything.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Just one quick question. Would these units be for sale or rent or both?
Right.
Rent.
Yes.
So what would the approximate rent be for one of your units?
Right now, the affordable, depending on subsidies and sort of finance stacks, and how, that's a hard question to answer right here because we don't have a specific finance stack put together, but our, my aim, and Tanya, I can feel Tanya's eyes staring at me in the back of my head, depending on how the final finance and subsidy stack came out, the aim would be to try to get it between $550 and $750 a month, depending on what the final subsidies ended up looking like on the units, so that we could target the...
30 to 60.
Lowest, right. The lowest, the lowest and most at, and that's a hard number to commit to right now, we haven't run performance and we haven't seen final, but that would definitely be the goal, to make sure that we're able to target people who need it the most. Ready?
Yes.
The second option, and frankly, feasibility-wise, for all the reasons I just said, is to demolish the current building and to rebuild on that site. The ability to start fresh and not try to retrofit into a building that was not meant, as I said, to be apartments, and certainly not meant to be a grocery store, and be able to build what we need into that site is a much more, not just cost-effective option, but allows us to really build into that space what we need it to be. So we started with, what we're proposing is a podium-built site with 90 to 120 units on top, that only goes up four to five stories of residential. You know, we could go up higher, it gets expensive to go up higher, which is why we limited it to 90 to 120 units. Obviously, the pros of this are that it is lower cost, it's much more predictable, it gives us the ability to do purpose-built retail for the grocery stores, which is much more attractive for grocery partners that would be coming into that space rather than trying to retrofit the courthouse space into being a retro, into a grocery space. It would obviously require rezoning, which I wouldn't anticipate a lot of problems with, and the other con would be, obviously, that we would ask that the county would take on the demo cost, which I think you already had an estimate for, my understanding is.
Could you remind me what that estimate was? 1 to 2 million?
Questions about this one?
So my only question that I have, I guess I need to make the statement first.
Yes.
For me, so I need to speak for myself, right? I am definitely committed to housing, the availability, housing choice, and eliminating the barriers to housing. But to access to spend 1 to 2 million dollars for demolition, and we have an offer on the table, are you open to the upset bid process that we have already ongoing?
You mean for us to buy it?
Yes.
So we looked at that. You want to speak to that? I'll let the brilliant and amazing Mrs. Skilman speak to the process of buying land for affordable housing.
Hi, Tanya, sorry to mean to get you out. No worries at all. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Tanya Skilman. I am the Deputy Director and Development Director for Anchor. To answer your question, Commissioner McDaniel, it would, we could, however, that affects affordability. So adding that, adding the purchase price, which would essentially be that, $2 million, would increase our gap, which potentially would increase the rents for the property. So we could, and make the property less feasible, make the building, the site, less feasible to build.
Yeah, do you have the numbers in terms of how much that would be?
Not at this point, and we can certainly bring that to you.
That would be helpful, yeah.
We can bring that to you, what that would look like, but I mean, in these types of Lytech projects, which require, just on their face, that 40% of the units are at 60% area median income, so there's your affordability rents. We usually try to address lower income with and apply to 30... We usually try to address lower income with, and apply to thirty percent.
Sure.
So, again, throwing all of those, that's where the mix comes in, and putting those in our model.
I gotcha.
That's where we would play with the numbers, but typically, on these light techs, you just can't do it with the tax credits anymore. And ten years ago, you just needed low-income housing tax credits to build the projects.
Yeah.
Now, you typically need a three to five million dollar gap financing to support.
So, the reason why I was asking these questions, because it seems, if I'm doing the math, that you're still, still going to be in about a thirty million dollar gap funding, funding gap after all that is said and done.
Oh, I wouldn't say, no, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put it there, and that's just based on my experience with low-income housing tax credits. I've got twenty years of experience doing this, and so, you know, again-
Will you have gap funding?
We, we will go, we will apply for gap funding, we have experience with that. We recently were awarded, Atlanta Federal Home Loan Bank, they awarded us some funding for our project here in Winston-Salem, the Gola Project. So, that's what we would do. We would begin chopping away at that amount.
So you're telling me that you will absolutely have all the funding-
I'm telling you that we will apply for different funding, and it's subject to approval.
I gotcha.
You'll never get Tanya to say, yes, we will absolutely.
Well, it's helpful, I need, you know, I need the information to make decisions.
Of course, of course. And so I try to be, I try not to overpromise. This is, as a nine percent tax credit project, if that's what we intended to do, it's less gap financing that we'll need. If we do four percent tax credits, we'll need more gap financing, so there'll be more, which is less, it's not competitive, it's guaranteed we'll get the credits, we'll get the project awarded, however, we need a larger gap to fill that.
I gotcha.
And that's probably more like, you know.
And the same question that I asked previously, relative to the upset bid process, is that something that you're open to? Because everybody is in need of money now, right, to just other places, we need to increase our fund balance, and, you know, we instructed staff to go and sell these properties for those reasons. So again, there's decisions to be made, but if you could help me with those numbers, that would be helpful.
I will. I just want to, again, with the upset bid process, I guess I need to amend my answer, is that we could, but then that would be four million dollars that we're paying for the land, right? Because if we provide you the upset bid for the two million, and then we need to, we need to pay two million to demolish it, that's four million dollars that we're paying.
I gotcha, but you're good, you're good at getting those grants and applications, so I think that you could come up with that.
Thank you.
Nevertheless, thank you, I appreciate you.
Okay. Okay. Option two. This is the one where we get into some legal peculiarities, which may require, which may require, my understanding is, perhaps, a voter referendum, and so I'll, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on this one, because there's some questions about the ability to transfer money versus land versus things directly from the county to nonprofits for affordable housing. So I'm not going to get too deep into this, because I think you'll have to likely get some opinions directly from staff and the county attorney about what this looks like, as if you chose to move forward in this direction. But essentially, it has been done in other communities in North Carolina, so it can be done to some degree. And what it would look like is you would sell under the current sale, or an upset bid sale, and you would take the proceeds from the sale, and you would split it in three ways. One way to a community land trust, rental stabilization and home repair down payment assistance fund, sort of overseen by a group of nonprofits slash county administration existing in the community. So Anchor has a community land trust that we are in the stages of setting up, City With Dwellings has a rent stabilization fund that they oversee for rental properties, and then a county home repair and first-time homebuyer initiative that supports small landlords and homeowners in the community who need assistance with upkeep and stabilization to be able to stay in their homes as they're existing. This fund, my understanding is, these exist in all three of these forms around the country, and certainly in North Carolina. My understanding is, again, there's some question about what, particularly the community land trust model looks like as money and/or land is transferring between the county and nonprofits for affordable housing. I think that's all, well, it's clearly all surmountable, because again, it's happening already, but it's something we're really excited to talk about, if this is something that you were open to. The community land trusts keep housing affordable into perpetuity. We think that we, we could, you know, assuming that the two-point-six-million-dollar sale goes through, that the money is split into thirds, as this model suggests, that we could put approximately ten houses in the first year into permanent affordability in the community, which would be an amazing win for the community permanently, which is, which is pretty impressive. We're happy to do a community land trust. I think community land trusts, if you're not familiar with them, deserve their own whole presentation, which is, is something that we're happy to do anytime you invite us back, because we could talk for an hour about just community land trusts, and setting up how that process has gone for us, and setting it up and doing that. So we're really happy to do that anytime. But that would be what this process looked like, it would likely have to, it sounds like, take a voter referendum, which I think would be fairly easy to do on the 2026 ballot, if, if, if that's the advice that you get, and that's what it looks like it might take.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Anchor, does Anchor do all three of these things? Community land trust, rental stabilization piece, the home repair, and down payment assistance? Do you all manage all three of those types of programs?
So, I'm looking at our finance person. We, yes, to the community land trust, definitely. We could, how would you feel about running a, we could take the money for both. We are not the experts in the community on doing the rental stabilization money. I would rather defer that to City With Dwellings, or somebody who already has a pot of money to do that. City With Dwellings already does that, they have money that they get from the city to do that. So I would, they already have that infrastructure set up, so I would do, rather them do that. The home repair and first-time homebuyer initiative, I would imagine that the county's already doing that.
We do down payment assistance, but we do home-
We do down payment assistance, so I would be okay with that.
We do both.
Oh, there you go. So I would, rather than duplicate what other people in the community are already doing, I would prefer to see organizations that are already doing that do it, rather than us taking money that, that organizations are already, have the infrastructure set up to do, that typically makes things go more smoothly.
Got it. Well, I assume, just in the community land trust, I mean, for us to do anything, I would assume all this would have to be kind of bid. I'm sure there are other people who do land trust kind of work, too.
Yeah, I've talked with, I've talked with some folks who I know are doing land trusts. Nobody's, there's a couple of different models happening in the community, so that, I think, would be part of a conversation we had if we did a presentation. There's, there are some folks doing a sort of multi-family, multi-family rental ownership model. We're doing a single-family ownership model, sort of traditional CLT model, where a single-family moves in, into a single-family home, and they own the home, nothing fancy, just sort of a very traditional community land trust model. So, just to sort of get people into affordable, permanent ownership housing. So I, I think that, yes, that, I can't speak to what your procurement or process would be in terms of that, but that is what we would be looking at.
Got it. Maybe I can ask our attorney this question. Talk about those three things. Let's just say that we want to do those three things, because our, I guess, the down payment assistance and the, and the home repairs, we're doing that with other dollars, we're not using our dollars for it. Any, I'll start there. Any restriction on using county dollars for that kind, to continue the same thing we're doing with, I assume, there are federal dollars from the state?
Yes, there are restrictions, and let me step back. This is, this option two really is a budget request. It's a request for county funds to be provided for certain services. It really has nothing to do with the sale of the Hall of Justice, other than it's a pot of money.
I understand that.
The city of Winston-Salem can do all of these, I believe, as of right, so they would be an appropriate party to approach with these requests, and they may have already done that, I don't know. To answer your question, no, we cannot do any of these right now. We are tied to certain federal programs, but these are not federal programs, and so to do this, we would need to have a referendum, which would allow the county to get into more affordable housing activities. Now, I prepared a memo for the board in August, and that was relying on guidance from the School of Government, and the first step is really a study of the community, and what affordable housing needs there are, where those needs are, what the current programs are being done by the City of Winston-Salem, nonprofits, the state, federal government, and so that might be the time, and I know, we may have already done some of those studies, I'm not sure, but that, that would be my recommendation, is to step back and to look at what, what is out there, what are programs we could possibly pursue, and then, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, who would be the best one to do that? It may be these folks, it may be somebody else.
Got it. A follow-up. Is there any substantive difference in the authority between doing one versus one A, and using county funds to do the demolition versus simply giving away a county asset?
There is, you do have the authority to give away the property, under certain circumstances. The demolition, and then giving the funds, it would depend on what the funds are used for.
Under what circumstances would we have the theoretical legal authority to simply give away the property?
So, and that was, again, I hate to keep referring to my memo, but that was from the memo in August, there are different ways that we could sell county property to be used for affordable housing. The last two that I referenced are a private sale with specific restrictions, it would have to be for a market value based upon those restrictions. The final one is a private sale to a nonprofit housing developer with restrictions, and that would not have to be at a fair market value, that could be at a lower value, or could be given away, but you would definitely, we would definitely want to make sure that the nonprofit involved is capable of doing such work, and has the resources to finish what they're starting.
Chairman, if I can just add, because I'm going to have to duck out to another meeting myself, but it would be great, first of all, to see the memo the attorney is referencing, saying, you know, the idea when we sent this, this initial letter asking for a pause on selling this county courthouse way back in the summertime, was to create the opportunity to have these conversations that we're having now, kind of under this, this pressure of the upset bid process. And so, I mean, I think the bottom line with this is that it's going to require thinking a bit out of the box, right? Which is really why I've talked about this in terms of the commitment that the commission has to making a contribution at every opportunity towards reducing the gaps that we have in terms of the need for affordable housing units. And that's what any one of these options, you know, whichever one is more feasible, whichever one is more cost-effective, any one of these options accomplishes that. So I think the real concern right now is just slowing down, at this point, enough to give all of these options, this kind of the due diligence, you know, to address some of the questions that have been asked further, so that we really can examine what makes the most sense, based on the principle, the county has property, the county has an opportunity, it should be leveraged to aid the affordable housing crisis in this community, and that's where it kind of comes down, from our perspective, so.
So I do have a question, follow-up, based on Reverend Ford. So would this group be receptive to, if the county had other properties that could be leveraged in this way, if not this building? One of the reasons why I did not support moving forward with the bid process, because I didn't want a scenario where we decided after the fact to then move with you all, and then it seems to be for the bidder, you know, kind of, well, why did you all open the bid up if you knew you were going, you could, you know, most likely do something different? And so we're at this place where a bidder is out there, you know, wanting to purchase the courthouse, and, you know, we've heard some very compelling information from you all, and I appreciate your hard work to come and share the information on behalf of the citizens, that quite frankly, a lot of our employees as a county could benefit from, that I'm sure, in need of housing. So I think that it is very symbiotic for us to be in the space to help with housing, based on the number of employees that we have that need housing. In addition to, you know, unapologetically, I speak on behalf of public school educators that need affordable housing, too. I think that, obviously, according to our attorney, there are some other things we need to really think about, even to move forward with you all, that needs more time, and so I hope that in this process of the bid, that's obviously going forward, and also trying to work on this issue collectively, even with the city, with affordable housing, where do groups like you all fit in with helping us to do that? And so I would like to see if there are other properties in this county, if this property doesn't work, that work out, that, you know, there can be some synergy around.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that Laurie can speak to the specifics in terms of what it's going to look like from one type of property to the next, but you know, I shared at the last county commission, I mean, this is a partnership group that represents a number of different organizations around the county and city, that are concerned with the affordable housing crisis, that are concerned with tenants' rights issues, that are concerned with increasing the capacity for homeownership and all of that. And so I think there's certainly an openness to, you know, having this conversation about all, you know, county-owned properties that may be available, and then it does just come down to the specifics, because as we know, with the Happy Hill Neighborhood Association in terms of challenges that land and other places, right? Each, each parcel of land, each property, think about the Cheltenham County Courthouse, brings their own set of dynamics, right? That have implications for, for development or redevelopment questions. So, this, this is a piece of property that was, you know, that was out there, we saw this, that the location is really important, in terms of access for folks who are generally going to qualify for affordable housing, to the resources and services that tend to be centered around the downtown, and certainly are here in Winston-Salem, as well as the potential for a grocery store that would not only serve the tenants and residents, but also the entire community that works down here, and folks that also live in reasonable proximity as well. So that's the particular set of proposals with that. But I think, you know, the, that's a long way around to saying the short answer is, yes, you know, let's see what the details are.
Thank you. So, and I think, just to address some of the things that the county attorney said, I, I think what's important in terms of capacity is, you know, as Tanya said, she has, she has decades of affordable housing experience. I have also decades of both development experience, both in affordable housing and on the public housing side. Our finance director, who hasn't spoken, but is in the audience, is, is also amazing, and has finance experience on the banking side and in affordable housing, and brings a world of good to the table. We have built a team who is committed to doing this work in affordable housing. We have forty properties, we hold- We have 40 properties. We hold almost $200 million in assets. You know, we are the community's mission-based affordable housing developer. You will not find somebody in this community who's doing this work like we're doing this work. Because we are doing this to do affordable housing. We don't do market rate housing. We don't do, we don't do anything else. We're doing this because we want, we want low-income people to have a place to live. And that's all we do.
Can I ask this question? In, in terms of, of the other projects that you are working with, that you have referenced, are they, how many of our partners are with counties versus cities? I mean, just as the attorney's review.
That's a good question.
The attorney's review is obviously, the statutes are obviously focused with cities. And I'm kind of curious, I'm speculating that Durham County probably does, I'm guessing. I mean, that you, I'm just, do you know, are you working with counties in this arena versus cities?
So some of the more rural projects would be county projects, right? I'm trying to think.
I don't, I don't think that at this point we are working.
Yeah.
But you're right. Wake County is very active in the space, in the affordable housing space. But we, we don't have any properties currently in Wake.
Working, yeah, working.
And you don't have any property with counties?
With counties, yeah.
So all your work's with cities?
As far as I can, as far as I know, you know, there's a long history.
I'm going, I'm going through my head, yeah.
Yeah. If I can add to Commissioner Martin's question, for me, I'm about, I'm all about being innovative, right? And I love the work that we have just done with the Peters Creek Parkway facility. But what has been the axe for, from the city of Winston-Salem? Has this project even been presented to them so that they can talk to us, our city and county, our planning departments? Any of that communication happened?
So Peters Creek Parkway wasn't our.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just saying, we, we are part, we partnered with them to do that.
So we haven't, I have not spoken to the city about this project.
You have not, okay.
We have a different, we have a different ask in front of the city right now in partnership with the housing authority.
I got you.
So we're working with the city right now in partnership with the housing authority for a, for a different project.
I think we just need to have more roundtable conversations in terms of seeing how this collectively works.
Well, and I don't think that this, this courthouse project could move forward without a city partnership. Absolutely, they would have to be brought in early and often. And our, and our, our, sorry. Our relationship with the city is good. So, so we, yeah, I don't, I don't have a, an issue with that at all. I think we have open and, and free communication with the city. I like, I like them very much. We sit down and have, and have good conversations with them. So, and I don't, yes, I don't think this could move forward, even, even the CLT or moving forward with the building or moving forward with the lot, any of these proposals could move forward without, without absolutely open communication with the city.
I agree. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, first of all, any more questions or comments?
No more questions. I have some comments, so I don't wanna interrupt.
No, go ahead.
So I was, I had just anticipated maybe some of the questions that you would have, but I, I think you've done a good job of coming up with your own questions. So, yeah, the timeline, obviously, there's a huge timeline difference between building and transferring money around. But those, those were also made clear in the proposals. So, but if nobody has any other questions. And then, yeah, just kind of the decision framework of where the priorities lay, like Reverend Paul said. I think this is, this is kind of the opportunity to, like you said, put, put some real emphasis on where, on, on where the priorities lie around what, where we want Forsyth County to be 10, five, 10 years from now, in terms of where the affordable housing footprint is. And, and that it is a city responsibility to think about it, but it is also a county responsibility.
Comments or additional questions or comments?
Additional comments? So I just wanted to say again that I, I thank y'all for putting together some very thoughtful proposals. And personally, I think that the, the conversation has been useful, whatever happens with this particular property.
Yes.
This is a much broader question for Forsyth County to, to discuss. Honestly, whereas I support the county finding more resources to put into affordable housing, I, I don't think we have a consensus yet to, to do that. I think that this has been a useful part of a longer-term conversation about that. And that I, I don't know that it's one that I expect us to reach a firm conclusion on this coming calendar year, but we'll see. I, I do think that our best opportunity to get some immediate resources, part or all of which could be turned to affordable housing-related programs, comes from the, the process of selling this particular property and then having a, a pool, a meaningful pool of, of funds that we could work with. Which is why I did not want to pause the bid process, whereas this had, has been a topic of conversation between Action for Equity representatives and, and, you know, members of the county staff and, and some of the commissioners for, for months. The, the particular, you know, pause request by, by force of circumstances came in after the, there was finally a meaningful bid for the, the property. And I don't want to see us lose that bid.
I understand.
I, I think it's very important that we move forward with that process as our best opportunity to get some resources that we could apply in this area. I would, among the sort of the longer-term conversations, I would be interested in more discussion of the community land trust option, which y'all are the experts in.
Yeah.
And have that be a part of the discussion process. And the, the, that broader process through which we have the opportunity to develop a stronger county consensus over involvement. So, thank you again.
Would you like me to, or us, to get you a longer community land trust sort of outline?
I'd be interested in that. I don't know that we need to.
Is that, can I send that to Chantel? And, okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay.
That's good. Anything else?
I'd just like to say, it works for me if I keep things more simple than today. This board voted to put the courthouse on the market. We've had a bid. We've agreed to go for an upset bid. I'm hopeful that the folks who placed that bid is not really looking at our board meeting today, because they're probably scratching their head. I really hope that we can, Kirby, if you can contact the folks and, and tell them that today was a discussion item, it has nothing to do with their bid, I would be very grateful to you for doing that. Because I do, I, I agree with Commissioner Bessie, I do not want to lose their bid. I feel like I've been in a city council meeting today, which is not where I need to be. We do a, a bit of housing, but we build schools. The city's never built a school, to my knowledge. So it has been a confusing day for me, why we're discussing this along with the sale of the courthouse, because there's no way we could ever give you the courthouse or to demolish it for you. So I'm hopeful that, that our folks, the pharmaceutical group, I hope they're successful in their bid.
But the discussion has been very helpful and, and has been very good. And I think this provided sort of a catalyst to do that. And I, I think it was a lot, it is a lot, for me, a lot more about providing potential resources that something could be done with than it is about actually trying to, to turn down a bid, for example, and to go. It's just, our experience with a small foray on Peters Creek with that group, it was a very, it was a 10-year process.
Yes, it was.
It was a 10-year process. It was, our part was a pretty small one, but it kind of kept them from having to stop at a, at an intervention time, and that's what, what we did. But it's, it is, it is nothing is for certain, it appears to me, in that. And that's a long, long timeframe. So I probably have not been particularly inclined to go in that kind of direction. But a pool of money to do something with the potential sale, with the sale, would actually make, make, it's worth, it's, it's worth having that conversation, even though counties are particularly, are not a part of this. But there are some partnerships, I think, among, with counties and cities, that maybe there are some ways to explore that further. But, yeah, I certainly did not, and I, I was interested in the upset bid process going forward, because we haven't had any interest that you could qualify as serious until now. And, and so, and we certainly don't want to lose that opportunity, because it is costing us a lot of money for it to just sit there.
And I, and I thank you for hearing us out. I think that this is, like you said, an innovative opportunity. And, and I appreciate your, your willingness to, to hear us out, because this is important work. And like I said, it's important for the county to acknowledge being, being part of this, because it's, it's important, so.
Commissioner Woodbury did have comments.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to quickly say for the record that, you know, I disagree with probably most of the commissioners. But that's okay. That's why, you know, we're voted in to have what I call strong debate. You know, I, I fully support what this group is attempting to do. I think that across, not just this state, but the country, counties are having to move into different roles around affordable housing, or it will not happen. I think that our conferences have talked about how counties can be strategic in our new roles into housing. I think that it is the will of the commissioners that the voters put in place to be able to do these projects or not. And that is something that, as a community, we have to be very conscientious of. So I think that regardless of how, you know, this thing moves forward, I hope that this group and others are encouraged to continue to come and lobby and advocate. Because I will tell you that the project at Peters Creek, it was what I call a Hail Mary to get them $600,000 for a forgivable loan. And it, and it happened. So I am encouraged to, you know, continue to advocate unapologetically and in full support of what I think matters at the end of the day. And that is, we have a right to be in qualif, quality affordable housing every last citizen in Forsyth County. And the county and the city and for-profit, non-for-profit may have to come together to make that happen. So thank you so much.
We appreciate you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. And I will get a, I will get a CLT information too. Thank you.
That's good. The last discussion item is, it's entitled, "The Unmuffled Engine Compression Brakes Discussion." I think if you had a chance to look at the handout that we received from, it's actually Brad Brials, who lives on, on Highway 158 up towards Blues, Blues Lake. And I've heard, Commissioner Linville's not here now, but I've heard him talk about his, since he is in that area a lot, not only the construction issues around Walkertown, but four-laning that highway, which will be very heavily used between basically the county line and all the way through to the, to the new bypass. There are two, a couple of different directions that you can leave 158 and get there. But we discussed this once before in the past, the idea of basically this, that, that word, I think it was used before, were Jake brakes. But this, in this case, it really is a question of, of basically installed mufflers that reduce excessive noise. And you actually have a copy of the, of the DOT sort of handout that talks about, the request for us is, would we, because DOT does not post those kind of signs, but upon a request from a municipality or a county, they would allow that to happen. And of course, they actually do the work or contract for the work, and they, they have to be paid, ever who asks them to put those signs. And it does require some study. But I think, I suspect after the road widening and going downhill, that there are some pretty noisy, you know, trucks that are using that. And the, the statute actually is, is that every vehicle has to have a muffler. And its part is to, is to guard against that. And it even has everything from decibels straight. So the, the, the question of worrying about enforcement, it, it should be, it is the law anyway. And it could be enforced by anyone, any law enforcement agency, whether it's posted or not. And in fact, a, a statement I underlined was that the compliance of these signs is analogous with the installation of a no-speeding sign. It means look out and be aware, but it has no specific message other than what the speed limit is, and in this case, the law, which is to actually have the, to have the proper muffler, muffler system. So it's a request to try to do anything that we could do to help basically mitigate noise on 158. And I, I certainly told the, about the request. I certainly mentioned that I would bring that forward, because I probably didn't understand quite the, the DOT position when we discussed it years ago, under the, sort of the guise of, of Jake brakes. So is there any interest to, actually, I think we'd have to find out that there's some studying that would have to be done. And where they would be placed, if you had signs, is Walkertown, or Walkertown, are they doing that or not? Because they also apply in areas that have low-speed limits too, through the Walkertown area. So if there's, if there's interest in pursuing that, I, I would be interested in that. But I, it certainly would require this body to approve it.
Sounds like a good idea to look into to me.
I'm fine. That's fine.
If, if I could weigh in on this, the NCO DOT has a memo that they published about this. And so the first step would be, the county would have to pass an ordinance prohibiting the excessive noise due to unmuffled engine compression brakes within whatever limits we establish for that. They would not, it would not be enforced by DOT. We would be responsible, the county would be responsible for enforcing it. And as chairman.
We'd be responsible for posting it.
And for enforcing it. It says, "The county will be responsible for payment of sign installation, enforcement, and sign maintenance." So, and.
But it is the law already. And so theoretically, any law enforcement agency, agent of law enforcement could enforce it if they chose to, is the way I kind of read it.
It's not the law now. This, this would be us establishing it as, as a violation within the county.
So I, I don't want to belabor this, other than to say, when it says, when the title of the statute, which is 20-128, says exhaust system and emissions control devices, everybody must have one. It's pretty clear, and that's actually quoted in this DOT handout. So it seems like the law part of it is clear. And so I suspect somebody, I mean, it applies statewide. It applies, in fact, nationwide in some, in some aspects. It's actually listed that way in another, another location. Anyway, I, I think, I think part of it is just investigating. I guess, I think, I'd like to know more about it and to see what it would take, you know, to do it.
The noise ordinance here has traditionally been complaint-driven. And it's, it's notoriously difficult to, to enforce against mobile sources. It's not entirely impossible. But if, if county enforcement were required, we do have the sheriff's department, which does do, you know, traffic patrols, among other, other activities. So I don't see that as insurmountable, if it's worth doing. I, I agree that it would be worth studying.
Good. So if that's, if we could go forward from that and take a look at what's, and maybe check with Walker. check with Walker Town, see if they're doing anything, and then we could look at it at the final, I see more of sort of a feasibility study, whether it's worth posting it or not.
Would you want to post it all throughout, unincorporated Forsyth, or only on that one particular highway?
Well, I think, I think this particular request is because it's a downhill area, trucks are, they're idling, it's loud and whatever else, and it's boom, 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 I think, making those kind of noises. But, and certainly could get more information on that particular request because they've made the request. I don't know about the rest of the areas and what's, just somebody knows a lot more about it than I do. I think needs to kind of look at it. Thank you. No further business, I'd say we are adjourned.